Okay, let's bring the meeting back to order, please. And so we're at board discussion. Questions? So, does the board have any questions? Board want to offer up some discussion?
Well, you know, I guess I'll start off. I was part of a process for this whole urgency ordinance. And, you know, we did a lot of discussion and pros and cons. And, you know, I get back to number one, the lawful possession. You know, there were a number of ways that it was discussed on how somebody could show that they owned property by a certain date. And when it was all said and done, we went with the recorded deed. I know that's a tough one because, you know, after you sign papers and get your money, there's a little timeframe in there that, you know, before it's actually recorded. Sometimes it can be recorded the day of, and sometimes it takes a few days afterwards. So, I get to that point because under the urgency ordinance, the whole idea behind it was, you know, we were hearing of the land rush and so many folks coming in and trying to, you know, come into the area and plant their crop and grow and so on and so forth. And our intent was to stop this rush so that we could spend some time developing an ordinance because at that point, we were agreeable to, we weren't going to ban cannabis. And we wanted to be able to establish some guidelines for the future. And so this urgency ordinance kind of put a stop to that and allowed us some breathing space, you might say, to look at the environmental review process, to look at the whole permanent ordinance, more public input, so on and so forth, as well as the state guidelines being worked through. So, by the time 2018 rolled around, we had some definite systems in place at the state level. So, I can't get past that point because we looked at a number of things, and that, this was one of the things, was the recorded deed. And to me, if the applicant is applying and you're looking at all the things that you have to do, that's an important piece of information to the application. The other things, you know, I don't go past that too much. I mean, I can see pros and cons on both sides. I understand how these boundary lines might be a little off. I can understand the water issue is, again, you know, something that needs to be worked through. But for me, I'm not getting past the number one, and that was the lawful possession and having a recorded deed by May 10th.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I also agree with, concur with Supervisor Ponte regarding the urgency ordinance wording and elements of that particular ordinance in regards to the recorded deed. Another area of my concern is the water issue. With the statements made by the appellant, that he was planning on putting in larger tanks for storage, the volume of water is reported on the application of 54,000 gallons. It just seems like there's something grossly wrong with that issue. At this time, I would consider those bases for my vote.
I won't argue with what any of the two supervisors said. I just want to chime in. The water, the water use in the creek or the stream, if you're diverting it, it should be for reasonable domestic use. If you are using 4,000 gallons a day out of that creek in dry years, you're certainly going to dry it up. We just had a slightly above-average year followed by many dry years. And as already mentioned, this dried up with a pretty good rain in October. So, I don't feel that the water that is here satisfied the applicant's ability to water the crop. And I don't believe that we should be drying up all of our seasonal creeks to do this. If we're going to do this, and if all the applicants out there are going to be successful at it, the water supply has got to be thought out better than this has been. That is one of the major complaints I have in my district, that trucking in water is killing the roads. And right here, that it's not even listed as being a way that it's going to supplement the creek water. And the creek, this creek, I haven't seen it personally, but I've lived up there, it will not sustain a dry year. And who else gets shorted when we put another straw into these small seasonal tributaries? We have to provide for water better than this does.
Chris?
You can go first.
All right. I happen to agree with Debbie. And there's just, seemed like this was really rushed. And there's a couple of things. One, it's not on the right parcel. One of the things that, the reasons why we put in the urgency ordinance was to stop the land rush. The other reason we put in urgency ordinance was because of the diversions that were going on in the creeks. There's pollution. There's just a number of reasons. But we had an inordinate amount of folks that were fleeing here to grow. And for our county, it was very stressful. The lawful possession of property prior to May 10th wasn't submitted properly. And as I look at these pictures, I notice that on May 31st, it starts off, it looks like it has, it might have maybe six pots or so on the side of the lower area there. And then by May 10th, there was a bunch of them imported. And then, as it went on, a bunch more, which brought it across, or at least by the looks of it, across the property line. Now, there's supposed to be a 75-foot setback from property. If you don't have one, then you need to adjust for that. And you either move your plan away from it, or you do a property line adjustment. Most of the folks, I believe, are, have moved away from the property line because of the ordinance. And so, the things that bother me are the water source and also not having lawful possession of the property prior to May 10th. All right, so can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission and reject the appeal by the applicant. Is that the correct wording, counsel?
Yes, that would be sufficient. It's adopting a resolution in front of the board. Can you pull up the agenda? The recommendation is adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission denial of the relevant Planning Director's decision to deny 2016-482 commercial cannabis registration for Jose Orozco on 2701 Independence Road in Rover Platte, file 2016-108.
That would be the wording I would oppose.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera and a second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
No.
That's four to one. We're gonna break for lunch for one hour.
So, we'll be turning at 2:35?
Yeah. Okay, let's continue our meeting. And what we're gonna do is, again, we're gonna go to another appeal hearing. And this appeal hearing...
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number 14 is from the Planning Department to adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the appeal of the Planning Director's denial of commercial cannabis registration 2016-377 for Mong Bang on West Murray Creek Road, APN 040-024-010, file
Good afternoon. This is Miguel with the Planning Department, and I'm here to present the mentioned appeal for Mong Bang for a commercial cannabis registration, which was denied by the Planning Commission. The 6.96 acre parcel is located on West Murray Creek Road, Mount Ranch. The reason for rejection by Planning initially was because the registrant did not provide adequate evidence of cultivation prior to the May 10th deadline, and also for providing false or misleading information. As you can see here, the appellant provided these date-stamped photographs, date-stamped April 30th. The photos depict six, at least six rows of pots with soil in them, and in these rows, there's at least 53 soil, or 53 pots. However, on aerial imagery from June 3rd, the aerial does not show any pots, or it does not show any rows. The Planning Commission found that pots and rows would show up on the aerial, and that this aerial image is not relative to the photos submitted. And that's, therefore, they determined that the photos are either false or misleading, could be another parcel, or just doctored photos. Mr. Bang provided supplemental evidence in the form of receipts, date-stamped prior to May 10th, to kind of prove that he was cultivating prior to the deadline. However, the Planning Commission found that since materials are transportable and are fixed to the ground, that receipts do not suffice to serve as evidence in lieu of the date-stamped photographs. Mr. Bang claims, or claimed during the Planning Commission hearing, that the pots were in fact in this aerial on June 3rd, and he doesn't understand why they are not showing up. On the bottom left, that's the June 3rd aerial. The top right, that's a current August/September aerial. And this is kind of just to show what pots on the ground would look like on that specific parcel. The Planning Commission found that photos submitted are not relative to June 3rd, or the June 3rd aerial, and that no sufficient evidence of cultivation was established prior to May 10th, and therefore, they denied his appeal. Any questions?
So, was this application then denied? Did the applicant pay a fee, or was it denied later in the process?
It was denied later in the process. He did pay his $5,000 fee. At the time of that he submitted his photos, we didn't have access to the June 3rd aerials. So, we had to take his word for it, the photos submitted for it.
Okay. So, it was as you were processing this application that you saw the inadequacies?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to confirm, the photographs provided here, presentation, have they been verified as to dates they were obtained, as listed as June 3rd?
Yes, they have been verified with our GIS.
Can you show the photo again with both of them? Both aerials?
Mr. Chair, do we have anybody experienced in the cultivation of marijuana that tell us how long it would take to conduct a grow like pictured on the right photograph there? I mean, how old does that grow? Two months, four months, beginning of the season, middle of the season? I don't have that expertise.
Well, I'm not a cultivator. But I've seen the cultivation sites to sort of know what that represents. And this is a maturing crop. It's, you know, and the typical procedure is that the plants are started indoors, and once there's sufficient daylight and warm enough weather, they go outside typically around June 1st. Not exactly, but, you know, the last week of May, first week of June is typically when they're put outside. At that point in time, they're maybe, you know, two, maybe three feet tall, depending on when they were started. And then they'll continue to grow. You can see those are fairly good-sized plants in the upper right. They can get anywhere from 10 to 15 feet around at maturity prior to harvesting. And so, those are, you know, end of August, early September, when that aerial image was taken. So, they're probably in the range of probably eight to 10 feet.
Was this applicant applied for a 22,000 square foot permit? Or was that...
Yes.
Is that approximately 22,000 square feet? Do you know?
It's around that, it's a little bit more than 20,000, but probably less than 22.
Thank you.
How big is the parcel there that's outlined?
The parcel is 6.96 acres.
Yeah, that row definitely looks bigger. If that's 6.9 acres. Because that's less than a half acre. It's 22,000.
We use a measuring tool that's on the GIS system that will allow us to give an approximate measurement. It's obviously not measured in, when we do the site inspections, they'll measure it in the field, the police enforcement officers measure it. But to give a rough approximation of the area of canopy, we'll use a measuring tool that's on our GIS.
It's mentioned here that receipts are insufficient evidence. Can you explain why?
They're insufficient evidence in terms of this appeal. The registrant had already submitted the requirement C through K at initial registration. So, all he's really doing is just adding to that in lieu of photographic evidence that shows the actual cultivation site prior to May 10th.
So, as we stated in the last appeal, the sort of two-part test to demonstrate cultivation as of May 10th, and one is the, make sure I find the exact language, date-stamped photographic evidence of grading or earth-moving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated, or date-stamped photographic evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. So, one of those two. And then the rest, the C through K, are additional information to sort of help back up that information. Because just sort of whatever information they had to demonstrate they made an investment into the cultivation site.
This area was burned, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Are any of the appellants here? I wasn't looking at your boy scouts over there, I gotta tell you. All right. So, anybody from the public like to comment on this? So, the appellant's not here for rebuttal. You guys have any more questions for staff? And I'm gonna close the appeal hearing, hearing done. Board discussion? I only have one question. Because I see the discrepancy between the dates and what's here, right? So, on the parcel, on the aerial imagery for the parcel that shows it for June 3rd, We're sure that's accurate?
Yes. Yes, we also have a May 31st Google Earth image that was provided with a staff report. I think it's on in attachment two or one, I believe.
Yeah, unfortunately, my little computer, only half of it's working. The other half is not working. Kind of looks like June 3rd. Looks like that time of the year, too. All right.
Well, based on the evidence before us and the lack of the applicant being here, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the appeal of Planning Director's denial of commercial cannabis registration 2016-3377 for Mong Bang of West Murray Creek Road, APN 040-024-010.
I have another question. Sorry. You're finished with that? Is he, does Mong Bang, is he the property owner?
No, he's not the property owner.
So, is there a lease?
Yes, there's a lease.
Is it stamped? Notarized?
It's not notarized, I don't think it is. We did not require a notary for the leases, but it was, it appeared to be a valid lease.
I think it says in here who he leased it from.
Well, yeah, but the computer is not working.
Oh, yours is giving a challenge?
Says the applicant is Mong Lu Bang, and the landowner is Michael Fauch.
Right. Okay.
I understand we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Ponte.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right, so move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine, non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Are there any members of the public that wish to remove a consent agenda item?
Good afternoon. Item number 25, please.
25, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Any members of the board wish to remove a consent agenda item?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 25.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte to approve the remainder of the consent agenda item, minus agenda item 25. Second. Second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right. Mr. Packenger, you're up.
So, number 25 is from Public Works. It's to authorize the Director of Public Works to sign the stream bed alteration agreement for the project and any other permits and associated documents that may be necessary, and to waive all plan check fees and associated permit fees for this project, and authorize the placement of the project on county property.
Good afternoon. This project is being managed by Ryan Hariford. He is here today, and this is an opportunity for him to discuss with you what the project entails.
First, I want to say thank you for your time and your work to allow me on your agenda. This project has been a desire of mine and several community members and groups for a very long time, and several community groups have tried to push forward this project in past years, but most have failed.
Can I get your name, please?
Ryan Hariford.
Okay, thank you.
I live in the President in Murphys. There is a clear and obvious safety issue at hand with the Algiers Street Road Bridge, and the project in your folders says that the project is to install a walking bridge alongside the one-lane Algiers Road Bridge. And being a resident in Murphys, I really want to see this project through before I go on to graduate and maybe come back, I don't know.
I'm glad you added that part.
The estimated cost for the project is $35,000 to $40,000. It is a large project for a community to fund through donations specifically, but there is such a strong support from the community that I believe that it won't be a large problem of the project. The stream bed alteration was pushed through Fish and Wildlife with the help from a local wetlands biologist, Mike Skinfield. And I would like to say that I would not be where I am today if it was not for the support and effort and guidance that Mr. Packenger has provided for me. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
I'm just happy you're doing it, number one. Number two, what a project.
Yeah.
You're learning all about the different processes that the county has to go through, or anybody else has to go through to do something like this. So, you know, I gotta hand it to you, man. That's, I'm impressed.
It's been an adventure.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make some comments.
Yeah.
This project has been on the drawing board for the township, if you will, of Murphys for a long, long time. When I took office two years ago, it was brought to my attention by the Murphys Business Association, the Murphys Community Club, to at least get the ball rolling on this. As you well know, rolling the ball downhill is easy. Rolling the ball uphill is a lot more difficult. I want to personally commend you, Ryan.
Thank you.
And your dad. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
I want you to know, I will support you any way I can, okay?
Thank you.
Does that include writing out a check?
I see there's only $4,000.
I think he's setting himself up.
I have all sorts of visions when you set them. Shovel, you know, waiter.
Get him, Ryan, before he leaves. So, Ryan, what's the cost? I understand the permit fees and that sort of thing. So, do you have any idea what the costs are associated to that?
Do the permit process?
Yes.
We, for Fish and Wildlife specifically, we've already paid a private fund of, I believe, 500 or around $250-odd dollars just for the permit process for Fish and Wildlife. And they, in return, gave us the stream bed alteration, which is then up to Mr. Packenger to sign. And that's why we're here today, is for him to get the authorization from you to sign that. He also, it's also to ask that all county permit and fees are waived for the project so we can reduce the total cost of the project as much as possible.
Yeah, you got an idea on that?
I don't know exactly what the permit fees would be, what the amount would be, but there's going to be some plan check fees for the structure. He has enlisted Grant Reynolds from Weatherby Reynolds and Fritz and to provide design work. And... and other engineering support. So when that's, when that's ready, that should be submitted for review. There's going to be a little bit of, like, little plans, encroachment permit type of information that we'll look at. And eventually, he's going to need some sort of pathway to connect to the bridge. So there may be at the moment a temporary type of rock perhaps for the...
Big old ground or something like that.
With, with the hope that in the future, we could get some grant funding and put in some sidewalk. The location of the bridge is on county property, and so that's another reason we're here, to get that permission from you, or the official permission from you, to allow this project to occur on the county property.
Does Ryan know an engineer that is mentoring or helping him?
That is Grant Reynolds from Weatherby Reynolds and Fritz.
That's teasing you, actually, Robert.
Pardon?
I was asking Josh or you on a...
Yeah. Or to an engineer.
Yes, as Robert said, that I have had Grant Reynolds from Weatherby Reynolds and Fritz, and he has been a huge help throughout this entire process in getting where I've gone. And we already have a set of designs, and it was through his designs where we just got our, like, rough estimate for bidding for the, for just the bridge itself. He also designed the abutments on both sides, and he probably will help design the sidewalk, the temporary sidewalk. We also had, as I said, wetland biologist, Mike Skinfield. He did the surveying of the area for plant life, and he helped with the fish and wildlife permit. And we also had, Gary Dever was our official surveyor. He was also a large help, and he helped getting us the survey of the area very fast.
Good for you.
Excellent.
Wow.
Thank you.
Better than we are.
Yeah. Good for you, young man.
I'm gonna have to be calling you to be an expert on this stuff here by the time it's all over, right? All right.
Hope to comment?
Hope to comment on this? You want to try to follow up with that, Dad? Because I think he's got you right there.
We were just talking on the way during the break, and we thought, just to highlight, that the county does own the property, they have cleared it through the property.
Right.
They don't have no issue there.
I'm actually aware of it. I was, I had talked to Mr. Packenger about it already a couple of weeks ago. I'm happy that Supervisor Olivera's involved in it. I think it's a very good project, so. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
All motion.
Okay, so, motion to approve by Supervisor Olivera.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Ponte. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Let's move on to Supervisor Announcements. Well, I guess I'll start off with the meeting on the 29th. I think we should probably cancel that one. I can't make it, and I know Olivera has CSAC, and I don't...
And I won't, I won't either.
29th what?
November. December.
The night meeting.
November. So there's three of us that can't make it, so it'd be wise to cancel.
We have a quorum, Sam.
You guys can show up. Yeah, we can show up, but we won't do it yet.
Well, who's the oldest?
Who's the oldest? I got mine.
Yeah, well, it doesn't mess with our 14-day window for the state of emergencies, right?
I can tell you.
And, but that's one of the reasons why I think at the end of the year, we need to be able to have a meeting, and at least to keep those rolling too. I don't think we're gonna be able to do that.
Okay, then if you want, those state of emergencies. They won't because they have 21 days.
Okay, so for November, by canceling the November 29th meeting, we can adopt the resolutions at the December 13th meeting, and that is the 21st day. So that is within that window. So we would be okay.
Right down the wire. And we can do it again in December too, right? Because December 13th to the first Tuesday in January is 21 days, I think. So that means we don't have to have that second, I mean, two meetings in December in order to do that.
So I believe that what we're looking at, and I'm not saying, no, we can't do that because that is 21 days to January 3rd. The new supervisors will have to be sworn in. We were planning a swearing-in ceremony that morning.
That's fine.
And...
Like, are you sworn in and then?
Some of them have plans. So I just, I'm throwing that out there.
They'll have to have one of their plans to be a vote on that. It shouldn't take long.
So, just letting you know. So does that mean we are not having a December, a meeting, a special meeting on the 27th or the 29th?
Yes. That's what it means. For me, it's not a problem. I think, I'm, I do not want to take any chances with our, with our status on the, on the state of emergencies. Boy, we'd be taking any chance if we were to.
Diane, we are talking about December 29th.
We are talking about December 27th or December 29th.
Okay, I'm good with either day.
I'm not good with either day.
Not available.
27th, 29th?
I'm good either day.
Okay. But that's only three, right?
That's it, that's all we need.
Is that all you need for the...
Oh, good. Oh, okay. Well, in fact, have a meeting. Great, good job.
So the 27th then, right? Is that good?
The 29th, the November 29th, the night meeting, we don't have a quorum, so that would be canceled.
Yeah, we'll be canceled.
We're holding a meeting on December 27th because we will not...
Yes.
So we're gonna say the 27th.
Yes.
Nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was all I had. Okay.
I attended a COG meeting as a board member, council member. And JPA 12, instead of driving all the way over to Sonora, I went to Amador County and had a teleconference in one of their supervisor's rooms. And that's all I got to report today. Haven't been very busy with anything else.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
I do have a couple of quick things. Excuse me a minute, let me get all organized. I have on my schedule a local tree mortality meeting tomorrow at the sheriff's office. Let's be our, for our local committee. In regards to those issues, I was notified of a press release dated the 7th of November from the Department of Agriculture where they've established a $4 million fund to remove bug tree kill trees on private property, which is huge. This is run strictly through the Department of Agriculture, and the criteria is listed in the numerous media, and I understand that should be on the county website after talking with Mike Miller and our PIO. I encourage everybody to read all the information. There are some limitations, and $4 million is a very limited fund. They are taking it on a application process only for the counties listed in that program, which do not include all counties in California, but they do include the high-risk counties, which Calaveras is one of them. So that's good news. That's a start in the right direction. We do have another issue that I want to talk about, and this is no reflection on the office of our auditor, or no reflection on the office of our assessor. I handled a couple of constituency, constituent inquiries regarding personal property tax on individual property such as planes, boats, things of that sort. After having a lengthy conversation with the assessor, it was determined that we are in a really undesirable situation as far as our backlogs. And I say this only to educate the public. After our discussions yesterday, it was an 18 to 24-month backlog on role changes. They're working on that as hard as they possibly can, but keep in mind that there's going to be a personnel shift, or if it hasn't already. I want to apply that same information to our auditor's office. I was notified by memo last week that they are, they have suffered a loss of one of their key employees, and they are trying to do what they can to make up and retrain, recertify, and get this wagon back on the wheels. Once again, I say this only for the education of the public, to have a better understanding of what we have to do in our county business and keep those wheels turning. Right now, we have to make changes. So I will be Friday at the Murphys Community Park at the memorial. I'll be participating in the camp, the actual festivities there, honoring our veterans on the 11th of November. And tomorrow, actually, I take that back, Thursday is the Marine Corps birthday, so septieth of July.
That's right. And you will enter that Marine Corps ball in Jackson, at Jackson-Bretreia.
We used to call it the Marine Corps crawl.
Anything else, Mike? Is that it?
That's it.
All right. I have nothing to report.
No, welcome back to...
Yeah.
CAO Ryan for world traveling.
Were you drinking dark?
Oh, I do have one, I do have one more thing I could bring up. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Through the cooperation of our admin, our CAO, I understand we may be in possession very shortly of a countdown clock to help our folks during public speaking and during comments.
It has been ordered.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. Just make it a little easier. Although I think Diane does a great job.
Yes, I returned from Ireland. I had a wonderful trip, so it's a very friendly, very outgoing country and beautiful country, but good to be home. Just wanted to notify the board, we talked a little bit about it earlier. The refunding of the GEO bonds occurs tomorrow on November 9th, and the refunding of the COPs occurs next Wednesday on November 16th. I also want to mention, let the board know that I will be out of the office on Thursday, and possibly Monday and Tuesday. My daughter's having surgery on Thursday. And if I am not able to attend the board meeting on the 15th, then Assistant CAO Brian Moss will attend at my place, but I, I'm hopeful that I will be here. If not, he will handle it for me. But I will be in Sacramento for the refunding of the COPs on Wednesday, the 16th.
Got to sit in their office like they invited to see that quick? That'd be kind of cool. I hope all those votes here got her surgery.
So the only thing that I have is, I just wanted to point out that we have new artwork in the boardroom. This artwork has been provided courtesy of Gordon Long of McCullum Hill, a local artist. And we're encouraging anyone who knows any local artists that would like to have their work displayed in the boardroom to contact a member of the spirit committee, of which I am one of them.
Okay. So, I guess, I guess I'll come in and hang this one, then, the little flag, right?
No, not yet. We have plans for it.
Thanks. All right. Meeting over, thank you.
There we go.